Onto item number two, presented by Elizabeth Boyd, who is a senior project manager and environmental science associates dealing with the Bog Stewart Master Plan Workshop. Of course, you're not Elizabeth, but I'm just reading what I had here. Welcome, sir.
Yeah, I'm not Elizabeth, but she is here.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and Madam Vice Mayor, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Dennis Cook, planning consultant. I did not write this. Environmental Science Associates Elizabeth Boyd is here tonight, and she will be talking. I will give first part of the presentation, then Ben Moody with your Public Works Department will be talking about some of the infrastructure planning for this, and then Elizabeth will be talking about the environmental document that was prepared for this. Get all my equipment here. Just to kind of quickly go over the agenda, we'll do an overview of the master plan, proposed subdivisions, there are two subdivisions proposed along with this. The environmental review process that Elizabeth will talk about, and then we'll have Planning Commission Council discussion, then at the end we'll wrap it up with the next steps that are to come after this meeting. I also like to, just as a kind of a matter of order, we're going to go through a lot of different topics, and so what I would suggest, of course, up to Mr. Mayor, but I'm on honor, that if questions come up as I'm going along, please interrupt and ask the question. I think to wait till the end is, it's going to be hard to remember that kind of stuff. So feel, please feel free to interrupt as I, as I go along.
We will do that, Dennis, and I just want to confirm that the folks on the phone understood that as well. How about Dale? He's, did he acknowledge? All right. Okay. Thank you.
The Bog Stewart Master Plan, just to start with the location. The larger map, Yuba City, and it's down south of Yuba City, south of Bog Road. It's a new area for the city where we haven't been before. It's outside the city's sphere of influence. On the little larger map here, you can see it's divided by State Route 99. We've got Bog Road on the north end, Stewart Road on the south end, South Walton Avenue on the west, and the levee, the River Levee, along the east side of the project. And it's divided in between by existing city development, including the Riverbend K8 School that's in that area. The intent of the plan is to create new, high-quality neighborhood, full range of land uses in South Yuba City. And by that, for residential, we try to incorporate all types of residential use, a single-family residential apartments, condos, mobile home park, whatever, to allow all folks, all types of folks to live there in the 741 acres. And in addition, it provides a complete infrastructure plan, sewer, water, drainage, parks. So, so you have a complete package of everything that will ever be developed down there. Just a bit, a little bit of background, excuse me, on the project. In October 2013, 2013 is when this kicked off. The city and county, the city council and board of supervisors had a joint session discuss the potential for southern expansion of the Yuba City sphere of influence to accommodate new development. And several months after that, the Newcombe Ranch landowners, which is one of the subdivisions that's proposed, applied for the pre-annexation zoning for their 160 or so acres. And then in March 2014, several months after that, the city began to landowner outreach in the south area to determine the boundary of the master plan. I think the primary concern with there was if you should go south Stewart Road or not. There's a lot of ranchette-type development south of Bog Road, and the question was whether they wanted to be included or not. And I wasn't involved, but my understanding was they did not want to be involved. And so, based on the, that landowner outreach program, in October 2014, they established the boundary to include properties only north of Stewart Road. In February 2015, Kells Ranch, Kells East Ranch owner applied for their subdivision, and that's the second subdivision, and we'll go more into that. And then in January 2016, the city hired environmental science associates to prepare the master plan, as well as the environmental impact report. And I think you've all received copies of all of that. And I'd like to also mention there that that was a pretty extensive process. There were, there were proposals put out, detailed proposals. There were submittals by several consulting firms, and they were all interviewed. And so it was a pretty extensive selection process, and ESA up to this point has done a great job. And then 2000, September 2019 is when it's began the public hearing process. Oh, I forgot to mention, in May, just last month, the EIR and the plan were out, the drafts, and they were circulated for public review and comment. And I believe that time period has since closed, although if there's any comments tonight, we'll try to incorporate that in also. Why prepare a master plan? I think the easy answer is the city council adopted growth policies that say we should do that. Back in 2004, when the city adopted a new general plan, there were discussions on, okay, how do we incorporate all this new growth into the city? And in 2005, I believe, the city council adopted 12, 12 growth policies on how the city should grow and the standards. They include all the infrastructure, sewer, water, drainage, how to do parks, affordable housing. But, but also, one of the, one of the policies was that all new development has to be within a master plan or a specific plan. Before us tonight is a master plan. But the advantage of doing a master plan, it allows us to create new neighborhoods for all lifestyles. We try to incorporate the multifamily with the single-family residential. You know, historically, a lot of times those get separated. The apartments gets shoved off to the side somewhere. So everything's trying, try to mix everything together. And so it's a full range. It's also a full range, full range of land uses. It includes retail, service, commercial areas, jobs areas for offices, and industrial, light industrial-type development, parks, school sites, and of course, all the infrastructure roads and all of that. And another reason for a master plan or specific plan is that it provides surety to developers and residents. And the residential part, if you live in that area, it gives you some idea of what's going to be occurring on properties around you. Or if you happen to be a new homeowner or business owner in that area, you can see what's going to go on around you. And I think a lot of people like to know what's going on, from my experience. And then for developers, development's a tough business. You know, we hear about successful developers. Well, there's a lot of developers that don't make it, and it's a very speculative and difficult business in the sense that they're expected to buy or some way tie up some property, which is very expensive. They file their applications, they spend a whole lot of money on the entitlement process with no guarantee of what the results will be. By doing the plans like this, it's all mapped out, what the land uses are, what the road widths are, with the sewer line sizes, water line sizes. And so whether they agree with that or not, they can put a dollars and cents to it and see if it works for them. They still have to go through the entitlement process, but it gives them more surety as to, as to what they can do with their properties. The land use map, I'm sure you've seen this in your text, but it's got a full range of land uses. The light yellow or single-family residential, low-density residential, in any plan area that usually consists of 70 or 75% of the land area, in single-family homes. Then the little darker brownish is the low-medium density residential, which they've assumed about 90 units per acre, which would be a mobile home park or what we call postage-stamped single-family lots, like 2,000 or 3,000 square foot lots, and stuff like that, and condos. And then the high-density areas like here are for apartments. The allowed range is 12 to 36 units per acre. In this particular case, the assumption could be about 24 units per acre, although for around here, that's pretty high. It's space for light industrial-type uses, and an office park, more jobs areas, a school site, and then the green are various parks throughout that we'll explain more. And then there's one thing that's a little bit different on this. This green areas like this, that's the buffer areas, the agricultural urban interface buffer zones that we have. There's a, an agreement between Yuba City and Sutter County about protecting agricultural lands that was entered into some years ago, because urban uses and agriculture uses typically don't get along too well. You've got the crop dusters making noise and herbicides and pesticides, and you've got dust and noise at early hours. Then you've got the houses where the dog runs out into the orchard, and the sun chases the dog, and mom chases the sun, and one breaks his ankle. So it's problems for the farmers, too. And so they've developed this agricultural urban interface. It's about 160-foot wide band. It's typically occupied by the wider streets, trees, masonry walls, trying to minimize people going, residents walk going out into the orchards, and also minimize the impacts a farmer would have on the residents. Going on with the land uses, a full range of housing types, using the averages that we've talked about, there are about, there's space for about 1,328 single-family residences, 1,189 multiple-family residences. So a pretty good balance of a mix of single-family and apartment-type stuff. And ultimately, at buildout, which is probably many years away, space for approximately 6,700 new residents. There's affordable housing component. That's one of the city's growth policies, plus it's a large issue with the state, all around the state. And you can see by these colored areas, the medium-low density and the higher density for the multifamily uses, those are typically where the affordable housing apartments and those types of things go. And it's mixed throughout. It's not all congregated in one corner of the plan area.
Good morning, Mayor. Can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
So I was reading in here, depending on the percentage amount of the overall building, there's a requirement through the housing element for building affordable housing?
Mm-hmm.
How is that going to be phased in?
There, the housing element, it provides avenues to encourage affordable housing by providing the land for that higher-density-type uses. There's not a requirement that anybody build affordable housing. Typically, that's when you have, like, the housing authority gets a grant, so the city participates with the housing authority to build affordable housing, or you have a private for-profit builder that builds apartments that are affordable. There's not a city requirement that anybody build houses under a certain price, price line.
Oh, no. I was reading in the actual master plan here, there was reference to, let me find the page, and then I'll get back to you on that.
Sure.
To, and how it related to the housing element. So I was actually going to applaud the fact that this was something being done, but I want to get clarity on how that's going to be worked into it.
The, the city's done everything it can to encourage it, but it doesn't require it.
Three dash 13.
Quick question while she's finding what she's looking for. As far as the housing element, there are some areas that were taglined as far as our last housing element that didn't really make any sense. Will, and I may not even be asking the right person, Dennis, but will someone amend our current housing element to reflect this? Do you know?
The next update of the housing element, and offhand, I'm not sure what that date is, but the state requires every five or 10 years it'd be updated, and it would be incorporated in at that time.
So it's not necessary to do it at, at the approval of this?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, kind of follow-up question. The governor's recently released quite a few regulations in regards to affordable housing. Have those been incorporated into this plan? And if not, when will we have the opportunity to make sure that we introduce those into this plan, so we are in accordance with some of the things that the state's putting down?
Yeah, I'm not all that familiar with that. The state is not, that I'm aware of, is not requiring cities or counties to, to build affordable housing. It's more encouragement at the local level. But I'm not, Elizabeth, also, I point out, Elizabeth Boyd is here from Environmental Science Associates. She's going to talk about the environmental stuff, as well as Ben Moody, the Public Works, is going to talk about some of the financing. So Elizabeth.
Thank you. I will just respond to the question. So the housing element contains policies, and what the master plan reflects is the current housing element's policies. And this plan, the way that it's addressing the state requirements is to have adequate capacity of properly zoned land that would fulfill the city's RENA needs, which is the regional housing needs allocation. So when the housing element gets updated, it will reflect, if this is adopted, it will reflect the land that is proposed under this plan. If it's not adopted, then your housing element will look at other sites to fulfill those RENA obligations.
This is Lori, the mayor, and I have a question.
Yes.
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 What is the current RENA number for the city of Yuba City?
Do you have that, Elizabeth?
2,679.
2,679 units.
Okay, so this would accomplish, if each one of those parcels were to be developed as affordable, then we would be approximately 1,189 units that would be eligible for development based on the current plan that you're proposing.
The RENA document is for the entire city. This has space for something like 1,100.
Right, right. So it'd have 1,100 opportunities.
Yes.
That would be introduced. Okay, thank you.
Just, just to be clarified, May, too, though, when we acquire county land, we may have to acquire a portion of their RENA amounts as well to add to ours.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, what Shannon is, is saying is, the city grows, this county gets smaller, we get a bigger share of the pie between the city and the county for the affordable housing.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I think this is probably a question for you again, Elizabeth. Just, just to make myself clear, when we get this first bite of the apple, so to speak, for, for this affordable housing, it seems to me that this is sort of the benchmark for how we're going to move forward. Before we adopt this, is there any, would you recommend that we at least take a look at what the incentives and what those might mean to the city? And would that be a place for, inside this document?
So I think that the question really does pertain more to the housing element. So when you're going to be doing it, I think it has to be adopted by, in two years, I think, because this, the current housing element expires in 2021. So then you'll be going through that process to update it. This plan is purely just about the zoning of this site, and it can contribute to your affordable housing numbers or other RENA allocation, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be. The, in this plan, it just reflects whatever the city is doing. Otherwise, it doesn't necessarily establish new policy.
Thank you.
One more question, maybe just for my own clarity. I want to have, it's on page, and thanks, Michelle, for finding that. Three dash 13. So it's talking about State Department of Housing and Community Development, that the housing is considered affordable if cost. So I was just basing on that particular page, et cetera, to get more clarity on that. So I think I'm understanding that, because it's not in the housing element. And I was concerned as well to make sure that we're staying in line with these new potential rules that'll be, you know, coming down our way by the time that this all rolls out. So that's where it was a little bit not matching to what potentially was being said.
So I, wouldn't, would you mind rephrasing that question? Sorry.
So what is written in here was confusing to me. It sounded like it was a, a part of the plan requirement, but it's, and in looking at the housing element, it's more suggestion. So that's what I'm, it was not clear to me, so it's not in a policy issue.
So under the rules for looking at what is affordable housing, and how does a city accommodate its RENA obligation, there are some basic things, like for a county that's more rural like this, but still not like out, you know, far out, but it's more suburban in nature. I think at the time that the housing element was done, it was a 20-unit per limit, 20-unit per acre.
Correct.
Would enable the city to claim those parcels that were, at least the lower end was 20 units per acre. They could be claimed as affordable housing. Whether or not someone built affordable housing was a different story.
That's what I needed to understand.
Yeah, so it's, it can be claimed for that under the housing element when there's planning, because the assumption is that in an area like this, if you have at least 20 units on an acre, then people are renting or buying something that's a little more affordable for someone moderate or low-income. But it doesn't guarantee that it will be low-income. There are new rules and regulations coming out about having to show that you actually have done, you know, the things that you said that you were going to do, and you're accommodating the appropriate number of units. I don't think that there's necessarily still a requirement for the city itself to build all the units, but, you know, there, this would just play into the next housing element. It doesn't necessarily have to have anything special.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Moving on to the business employment part, there are, is enough commercial zoned property for 473,000 square feet of building, of commercial, retail and service commercial-type buildings. And just maybe by reference, just to give you a comparison of how that relates to things here, the Bell Air Center, which is a block or two west of us, I think that's about 190,000 square feet. Walmart is 205,000 square feet, so you did 2 and 1/3 Walmarts there. The mall is 400, 500,000 square feet. So there's a lot of retail space there. And then office, there's space for 108,000 square feet of office space, and then with business, technology, light industrial, 575,000 square feet of building space. And that would translate in years away, when this is built out, to approximately 1,900 new jobs created within that area. Infrastructure, this plan provides for a full range of services and facilities that will be provided, will be developed as growth occurs in that area, starting with parks and open space. 11.4 acres of neighborhood parks, there's a total of six neighborhood parks within this plan area. 11.3 acres of a community park, one community park. About 62 acres of open space, most of that is along and near the Gilseizer Slough. And then a 20-acre K8 school site, and then there's an adjacent to a neighborhood park, which is two or three acres, and so allows for joint use of those facilities. And I might ask, also add that the community park also has a dual use for drainage ponds also. So for a week or so out of the year, have water, and it'd be built at multiple levels, but it can be a dual use.
Through the mayor. Dennis, one of the, one of the things that, that struck me in this report is the, the ability to use joint use, but I would think that our experience here in the city with that has not been as would, one would have desired. So for instance, most of the school facilities, the gates are locked. The detention ponds have not been improved. So this concerns me in regards to counting this as open space and park. What guarantee would we have that this, this would actually have public access?
The existing drainage ponds, like the one along, the Frontage Road along Highway 99, that was built years ago before all of this was even thought about. Because it's in the plan, I mean, it's up to the council, but to, to enforce it, but when a developer develops property, they have to provide drainage, they have to provide the pond. The pond will be there. It's up to the city through its park and recreation fees that you collect from houses and the grants you get to develop those properties. But it's up the city to enforce it. City will own the property.
Okay. I live up in that area, and that was always supposed to be a, an open space, and the gate remains locked, and there is no access. What about the, the school, the school sites? I did talk to staff today. They are locked, and we don't have access. Is that something that, that through this plan, we, we can work with the school district on, or are we just going to have to hope that an agreement can be made between Yuba City Unified and the city of Yuba City to keep those actual open spaces?
Yeah, obviously, we can't require the school district to do something. We can only control Yuba City. And what this plan talks about for the city portion of it, for example, that sharing of the neighborhood park site, it would be available to students during school hours for athletic events or whatever they choose to use it for. Then after-school, weekend, summertime, could be open to the public. We can't require the school district, although there's been a lot of talks with them. I know the Lincoln East Pacific Plan does all of this, the Margarita Plan, which hasn't been adopted, but it does that. So it's been an effort by the city to do that, but we can't control the school district.
But we are considering that as open space for the purposes of this plan?
Not the school property, no. No, just the neighborhood park.
One of the other questions I have, and maybe you're going to get to it, but it talked about park in lieu fees.
Uh-huh.
Can you help me better understand what that means? Because it sounds like we would have a requirement through the general plan for certain park space.
Yes.
But the, the development could provide in lieu fees. What would those in lieu fees be used for?
Park improvements, buying land. So if you have, if you're doing a subdivision, if your subdivision happens to be in an area where the city wants a park, then you dedicate, say, three acres or whatever it's needed for the city park, and you get a credit instead of paying the fees, whatever the value of the land is. If you don't have a park site on your property, you pay the in lieu fees. I don't know what the park's fees are right now, some thousands of dollars. About $7,000 a house. That money is collected by the city for each house, and then the city decides how to spend it, but it, but it has to be spent for either buying parkland or building parks, facilities. It can't be used for maintenance or salaries or anything like that, just like all the impact fees.
So maybe this is a question for Ben. In regards to, to this, the parks, then we're collecting fees, then we're going to acquire the land and build the park? Is the developer going to build the park for us? How's that, how's that proposed in this plan?
All right, so good evening. Ben Moody, City of Yuba City Public Works. So Mr. Boomgarden, Councilmember Boomgarden, you, you hit on a contentious topic that definitely has been debated for this, for this project, because there's definitely an effort on the city side that in the past, we've seen development occur, and then the parks never come. And so there's been a push that with a certain phase that we bring those parks up forward, so it, it happens with the initial development. And so with this plan, we've actually kicked around a couple of different versions, and they've, to help, to help mitigate that, they're putting, with the Newcombe Ranch is proposed to be in the first phase of the project, we're proposing that part of that have the neighborhood park element in there. And so every time a house gets built, they'll have to pay the city impact fee, which would be that $7,000 per house. And then with that first development, they'll have to dedicate that property for the neighborhood park. And then we'll get into who's going to build that park through the development agreement. So right now, this is establishing the plan, where the park's going to be, how much credit they get for it. And then through the development agreement, the council and, and the city could work out some of those terms with the development as to who pays for it and, and when is it built? Hopefully that answered.
Okay. I, the, the development in this project made great sense for me. I've just seen, over my time with the city, that, that we seem to get promised open space, we seem to get promised parks, and we seem to have it, and then everything happens and they don't arrive, or the gates are locked, or the detention ponds aren't improved. So that's the nature of my, my questions, not, not necessarily try to put a bullet in, in this plan, but is, we talk about open space, we talk about parks, we talk about access, but I have an interest in making sure that that actually happens with this plan.
Agreed. Just a map representing the park. Just a map representing the parks. There are six neighborhood parks throughout the plan area, and then the one community park. And as I mentioned, this park, this is a proposed K A school site, and it has a park next to it. Of course, the city and the county have to come to some agreement of joint use, but at least the plan sets up the opportunity for it. Similar, this community park, it's eleven plus acres right here, it will also be a dual use for the drainage ponds. And the drainage ponds, you can't avoid building if they're gonna develop down there because that's the only way you're gonna get the water out of there is, is building those. And those, part of that is dedicating the property to the, to the city. And then the, the, some of the open space, primarily along the Gilser Slough, it's all in the floodplain, and it's a nice opportunity to put a little trail system in, stuff like that connects. There's also trails that connect with the parks. Interconnected streets, it's important that this really connect, intertie with the city streets. There are five north-south streets that, you got West Walton Avenue, State Route ninety-nine, Phillips Road, Railroad Avenue, and, and Garden Highway, all north-south roads that will be going through. And then from the east-west, you've got Bog Road and Stewart Road. You can't really do more crossroads just because you're not gonna get an intersection at S R ninety-nine. And, and then within that, those streets, there are some other collector streets that will be built. There'll be some roundabouts at some opportune places, and everything will be interconnected. And then these dash lines are the proposed subdivisions, they're local residential streets that they'll be building. There's also an extensive bike and pedestrian opportunities, as well as just for auto traffic. Gilser Ranch Ray will have a shared path and a bike lane. A shared path, something newer, we don't, I don't think we have any built in the city yet. The harder specific plan calls for some, but they haven't been built. That's a ten-foot wide path to use for pedestrians and bicyclists. It's, it's just a real nice facility to have. Phillips Road, Bog Road, South Walton Avenue will all have shared paths, as well as on-street bike lanes. And the shared paths are off the street, and I'll show you an example. And then also important, all the major streets, what we call general plan streets, which are collectors and arterials, they will also have on-street class-two bike lanes, and then detached sidewalks if they don't have a shared path on that side.
Through the mayor, this is Lori.
Yes, Lori.
I have a question. I apologize, I need to go backwards just a little bit. I was trying to find the page in the, in the plan. Can we talk a little bit about Bog Road and the size of that road and the current, I believe it's, I find it very narrow from ninety-nine to Railroad? And how, is that going to be a four-lane stretch through there?
Ben, do you wanna talk about that?
As a collector?
And Ben, if it's convenient for you.
It's arterial, four-lane arterial? And then on your map here, is it a collector or an arterial? I can't really tell if that's red or orange.
Give me a second here. Where are this cross-sections at? There we go. Which one is it? It's, well, there's different.
So, it changes, when you first come off ninety-nine, it goes in front of the commercial area. And so, there's a reference key on figure fourteen, four-two, there's a key map. And so, if you flipped to four-two, there's a nice map that it basically has a letter, letters displaying each road section. And so, then if you flip a few pages forward, then you could reference what that road would look like. So, so section D, right where you come off Highway ninety-nine, is a, is a four-lane road with a center median turn lane. But if you get closer to Railroad, where we have the existing houses, you look at F, the section F, where you come into a, a two-lane in one direction, a center turn lane in one lane, in order to fit into that existing right-of-way. And those road sections were developed in conjunction with the traffic study, and then also with how to fit into the existing right-of-way.
Ben?
Through the mayor, this is Dale.
One, one second. Dale, I have the same question for you, Ben, regarding South Walton. It's in line with Mr. Smith's question earlier.
So, Mr. Smith, you, from past discussions, he lives north of Lincoln Road. And so, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think what he's trying to find out is if this plan will improve any sections of Walton north of Bog Road. And so, with this plan, it doesn't identify any work north of Bog Road. It's just strictly south of Bog, between the boundaries.
All right, thank you. And Dale, go ahead.
Okay, that was gonna be my question because I think that probably relates to Stewart Road as well then. Because obvi- obviously, we've been having challenges with Stewart Road and, and, I mean, it's, it's currently a very narrow collector as well.
So, there's an important point that Sean Menard with M H M, he's a local engineer that, that helped coordinate the master plan for these road sections, that with this, with this plan, as development occurs, they'll be paying, paying city impact fees. And so, the one benefit that as development occurs, and they build a new home, they will pay the citywide traffic fee, which a portion of that on Walton Road is identified in the impact fee program. Which, at the city council's discretion, could then be utilized if we want to improve Walton in the future.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Since we're looking at the zoning map, one of the, one of the things I, I'm asking if you took into consideration is the proximity of multifamily, the R three zoning to certain types of services. Tax credits are the biggest game in town as far as funding affordable housing, especially the, the, the multifamily. So, if, if the R three or some of the R three was located close to Riverbend, that would give a project points. And if you don't have enough points, you lose. This area right here does not provide much in the way of points. You have to have transit corridors, you have to have proximity to medical, which this doesn't have points for that. Schools, there's, there's a number of things, but if we want to encourage affordable housing, we have to keep in mind where affordable housing is funded. So, if that hasn't been taken into consideration, I would just ask, since this, we're having a workshop, that you consider maybe shifting some of that. I see that, that some of the R three is next to land that's designated for schools, but that doesn't, if school isn't there, you're not gonna get the points until it's there. So, that's just, you know, a comment or a suggestion on my part.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lori is raising her hand.
Go ahead.
I just would encourage that when we look at the roads and the infrastructure, I've heard a couple of times talk about the fees being paid and then the roads would then be constructed. I just really encourage that some of those major roadways that we know are going to be constructed, be constructed as these maps get closer and these contractors and developers are more serious about putting their infrastructure in. And then we charge them back. They pay back the city when they come in and do their development, rather than us building them after the fact. We need to be able to handle the traffic that's going to be created, rather than having traffic hazards that we're trying to mitigate later.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if I can add to that, one of the problems with impact fees is they come after the development, not before. And that's why it's hard to build the roads and the parks before the subdivisions are built. You know, they do their fair share as far as their internal roads and the frontage roads, but you have to get enough new development and new houses, new shopping centers to get the fees to build the roads. So, it's, it's kind of a crazy system. It's very difficult to work with, but that, that is a big issue.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Along with the roads, on Garden Highway, the, it states on four-dash-five that it's gonna be a four-lane primary. Have we, Ben, have we expanded that into the part all the way through four-lane? Or is that the plant, where, where's that going to? It says, serve the eastern residents, neighborhood along Feather River. The existing improvements should sufficiently serve the residential community, so.
So, for Garden Highway, it's really just an extension of the existing design. And if you look to the next page on four-five, in the picture element, it's, it's a two-lane road, a four-lane road, two lanes each direction with a median element on it. And so, but it's, it would just really be an extension of that, that area to the north, bringing that down and widening it to put the median and the multiple lanes in.
But it's not an all-four lane, the whole?
What's that? But not the, well, the median's there, right? But this puts a curb, this puts a curb gutter, the, the parkway strip, the sidewalk, it builds the full road.
I think, I'm thinking more further north of where it's at now, because I, kind of, what Lori was alluding to is the additional traffic based on the growth of this area.
So, for this plan area, it's only identifying that improvements immediately adjacent to the
To the actual.
To the actual development, proposed development and the sphere expansion.
Okay.
Definitely elements in the traffic analysis, if they, if they show a need that are outside, where we've looked at intersections in the north, north of Railroad, where all of a sudden we have more traffic being impacted, that's put as a mitigation measure that's identified and then certain money's collected or those improvements will be required with, with the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of examples of the street cross-sections. It goes from just our local street, it goes through our subdivisions, thirty-foot, thirty-eight-foot right-of-way, to ten-foot lanes, and then you've got a, a parking spot, seven foot wide plus a foot in the drainage pan, up to some of your larger roads like, like Ben mentioned, the, the four-lane highways that are divided with landscaping. And here's an example over here of a shared path. You've got a sidewalk on this side and a shared path over here. It's ten-foot wide for both bikes and pedestrians, as well as on-street bike lanes.
Through the mayor.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Dennis, we've gotten this from developers here the last six months to a year. They'd rather have backyard in what the proposed landscaping that we have proposed here, the upper top right-hand corner that you were showing. Is this just proposed or is this a done deal?
This here?
Yeah, where, where we got the landscaping, you know, trees and the, between the sidewalks and the, and the roads. We've had developers say they'd rather, they'd rather get more backyard and we won't, we're not gonna have trees on the, on the, the streets like you have proposed. Is that cast in stone or is this?
Well, it's a, it's a city standard, and it's as cast in stone as the council wants it to be.
Okay.
Action of the council would, would change that. I might add, just by way of background, some years ago, when this was introduced into the city, because it used to be just the sidewalk to the back of curb without that, and the city wanted to go back to the tree-lined streets because of the aesthetics associated with it.
Correct.
At the same time that these six-foot landscape strips were added, the streets were narrowed by about six feet, so it wasn't a total loss of land to new development. And plus, this, you know, this still does provide a lot of aesthetics to the neighborhood if you, if you drive through some of these newer neighborhoods, I think it's turning out.
Well, I totally agree with you, but you know, the developers are coming to us saying, we don't want that, we want, we want more backyard. I just, that's why I'm just asking if, so, on councils, we could change it anytime we want.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Water, the water will be fully connected with the city water system and everything will be looped. The existing, there'll be several connections with the city water system on Railroad Avenue, existing lines, Bog Road, Shanghai Bend Road, Garden Highway, there's existing water lines, all twelve, fourteen, sixteen-inch lines that will be extended into the property, as well as another exterior, exterior from the project, water main that will come down west, or I'm sorry, South Walton Avenue. I keep wanting to call it west. And then those lines will be carried, those major trunk lines will be extended through the project in the main areas, and then smaller feeder lines will feed off that, all looped through the subdivisions. And the city has adequate capacity in its system to provide that water. Similar for wastewater treatment, the city's wastewater treatment facility is located up in here. There's lines coming down, down Garden Highway. It's, the area, the new subdivisions will drain, the wastewater will drain north into Bog Road and into the sewer plant. This area over in here will drain over into Garden Highway, up into the plant, and then this area down in here will drain again to Garden Highway, but at a different location, as well as this area and up into the wastewater treatment plant. And that's, this provides all of the backbone infrastructure, and each subdivision will build its internal lines.
Through the mayor. Dennis, on the water part, I didn't pay, I, I might have missed it. Are we planning on having a tank out there, tanking?
Oh, yes. I didn't mention, there are, there's two places for water tanks. One of them is right over in this area, and then the other will be somewhere right in here.
Thank you. I, I, it's my fault. I missed it. I just, I just wanted to make sure.
It's on a different map than this.
Okay.
So, with the recent update to the Water Master Plan, staff looked at near-term development to look at the positioning and the sizing of the tank. And technically, it's not required with this development. It depends on who develops first. So, if the El Margarita area develops first, there might be a tank position in the Franklin, Franklin, George Washington area. And then, if, if, and so, there's not necessarily a tank associate with this. It depends on the phasing of development that occurs within the city.
Thank you, Ben.
Stormwater drainage, water goes in different directions. Most of the project will drain into the Gilser Slough. For Kells East Ranch and Newcombe Ranch, they'll, they'll drain into the Gilser. For Newcombe Ranch, it all drains into this big pond here, which will also serve as a community park. And, and then there's a sixty, sixty-inch line that will go under S R ninety-nine into this pond, and it'll be metered into the Gilser ditch. This area over here will also be metered into the Gilser ditch. This area over here will drain into the existing drainage lines over here that will drain into the south ponds. If you drive down Shanghai Bend Road towards the levee, you see on your right side that big pond with the oak trees in it. Those will drain there, and then that pumps it out into the river. Similar to this area down in here, they'll build lines to connect with the line in Garden Highway, and it'll connect and go up to the south pond. And then this area will also. So, some of the water goes south this way, some of it goes over to the river that way. Public Facilities Finance Plan, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben to talk about that.
All right, so, a quick overview. So, as part of the master plan, as part of the work scope with ESA, we had a subconsultant, New Economics and Advisory, do a public facilities financing plan, basically with the purpose to figure out what those costs were as the city works, develop, to develop the development agreement for the project with the developer, and then also as information when you work through the master tax exchange agreement with the county. And, and a, a big reason also is that part of the growth policies is that the developer has to pay its own share, pay its fair share as it goes through this. So, we really want to know what the costs to build those roads, build those parks, build those drainage facilities are. And so, ESA, through their subconsultant, put together a finance plan. And with that, just some real general numbers here, that to do that infrastructure that you see in there, the roads, the storm drain, the parks, you're, you're looking at a total project cost of seventy-nine million dollars and twenty-eighteen dollars. So, in order to come up with those costs, they had to make some assumptions on how it would be. So in order to, um, come up with those costs, they had to make some assumptions on how it would be built. Phase one would be the Newcombe Ranch, which is this area Dennis showed a little earlier. That's, uh, east of ninety-nine. And then it would be Kells East, which is west of ninety-nine, and then you'd have the remainder portion. And the costs, um, pretty much in order to extend the infrastructure would have to be phased that way in order to happen. So how to finance these improvements? So this is a big deal, um, as Dennis mentioned, you know, coming up with twenty-six million dollars just to get the roads in place before you could actually start building, um, it's a big deal. And so when you look at those fees, uh, typically, the finance, the finance plan establishes what that fee is. And so when developers come in to pay their fair share, if you have multiple developers, they would have a Boge Stewart master plan fee, so a special plan fee that each developer, um, property owner in there would pay their, their proportionate share of that fee as they come in and develop, so. It, and so with that, it's gonna, that Boge Stewart master plan fee would pay for the infrastructure, the public facilities, neighborhood parks, the open space for, um, for the plan. And so, uh, they looked at a couple of different options on how to finance that fee. The, it touched ba, it touched on the CFD, so the Community Facilities District option. And it wasn't, um, it didn't look like that was a feasible option in the finance plan based on the existing CFDs in our area with the school fee. And typically, you hit a CFD, um, limit of about one-point-eight percent of your total assessed value. And so if you have the school district already, um, hitting it for one percent, um, you have minimal area, you have, you have minimal, um, remaining funds to leverage for that, for, to finance the, the project. So really, it'd be an out-of-pocket fee, maybe in conjunction with different funding mechanisms. All that said, you're looking at a cost just to build the roads and the public facilities of approximately ninety-one thousand dollars, um, into each house, which is about twenty-one percent of the, of the house. They used a base house, twenty-two hundred and fifty square feet with a sale value of approximately four-hundred-twenty-seven thousand dollars, which was based on, um, some comparable numbers up in the Valencia area and different, different, um, homes around town. And so what that's really came back and what was stated in the finance plan is that you're, you're pushing the threshold and above it that it's, um, potentially, it's really tough to develop in ci- in the city at that cost because you haven't brought into the equation, um, the cost to build the home, the land and profit. So with this, a, a big element on here is that there's a Boge Stewart master plan fee and there's the ci- existing city impact fee. And so with it being outside the sphere and then we're gonna adjust the sphere to be inside the sphere and then annexed into the city, they would pay, they would pay the city impact fee and then they would also have the Boge Stewart master plan fee for those specific roads inside, inside the area. So some other fees, just touching base on some, some fees in, in this, in the city is the school fee. So Yuba City Unified School District has a one-percent, um, general property tax, CFD. Yuba City, uh, through the growth policy requires a CFD for, um, take care of parks, um, police, fire and road maintenance. And then you have, um, uh, just another fee that you typically see in these subdivisions when they get built is an ongoing line landscape maintenance district to pay for those streetlights, um, maintenance, uh, for the drainage facilities as they get pumped out and, and various special, um, related improvements. So, that being said, overall, um, what the city's looking at doing with the impact fees is that we're working to, through the Water Master Plan, the wastewater master plan, and we're currently working through the traffic impact fee update. So that when those are all said and done and should this area be annexed, should the sphere be adjusted and they be annexed into the area, then we're set up to have a new overall fee, an impact fee that, that incorporates this area.
With that, that was the finance, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll turn it back over to Dennis.
Through the mayor, I have one question. You said, single-family dwelling, ninety thousand, six hundred. What would it be on, um, the multi-dwellings, duplexes and apartments?
So these are twenty-eighteen numbers.
Exactly.
And for the low-medium density, they use the estimated square footage building, eighteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet, a value of three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars and the, uh, the price tag is about eighty-three thousand.
Uh, flood zones, the portion of this planned area is in the floodplain. Uh, what you see, the, this, uh, light blue area, uh, it's the FEMA adopted hundred-year floodplain. You'll see other maps and maps in the plan that show a larger area in the floodplain. Um, regardless, you cannot build in floodplain. And so everything will be flood-proof. The FEMA requirement is that new development has to be elevated one foot above the projected high-water marks. And so you'll see in a second here with the subdivisions, how they will elevate, uh, the subdivisions to be above that. Oh, I got it upside down. Sorry about that. Um, moving on to the development standards and guidelines. Uh, this master plan provides a full set of, uh, development standards in lieu of the zoning. And the, the beauty of that is, it's all, you don't have to look at the zoning code. You look at the plan for the development standards and which gives you like setbacks and minimum lot size and building height and all of that. And then, um, the design guidelines, there's in Appendix A in the back of the plan, there are building and site design standards to require a fairly high-quality buildings to be, uh, developed. And, um, this last, it's good economic development. Um, but I wanna explain that because it might be a little bit counterintuitive because a lot of the thinking is, you know, that keep it as cheap as you can and, and call it industrial and, and they will come. Um, but there's more to it than that. And that is, if you're a business owner looking to relocate a business or to expand your business to a new city, Yuba City compare, uh, we compete with all the other cities. And if you're looking for a city to relocate your family and your employees, you want nice-looking facilities, uh, nice-looking landscaping, streets and all of that. I think in any city, the, the first two priorities is public safety and public health. But I think, uh, good design is right in back of that. People wanna live in nicely-designed communities and it's good for economic development long-term. If you wanna, if you wanna attract those higher-income jobs, you have to provide facilities for those types of folks.
Through the mayor. When, uh, when we put this out for public comment and you thought that the, uh, comment period had ended, did we get any comments on the development standards and the guidelines at all?
I don't believe so. It was, it was more for the environmental document. Now, there's gonna be a whole public hearing process for the plan itself. All the neighbors will be notified of the public hearings and, uh, you know, developers, anybody that wants to come and testify are certainly invited to do that. So this is just kind of the first shot at the public.
Okay.
Part of it.
Kind of a follow-up to Vice Mayor, um, to Vice Mayor's question in regards to builders and developers. Um, he, he raises a good point. They do seem to have, um, a fair amount of feedback in regards to certain things that are in our current design guidelines and the development standards. When, when this plan was developed, did this include input or feedback from, from local builders and developers at all? Or is this staff's work?
I don't believe up to now that it has. That's what the public process will be for. But, but on that, um, you know, in planning, it's not a black and white business. You've got a little bit of black, a little bit of white and lots of gray area. And it's always a balancing act, to make it affordable, to make it as nice as you can. In this council, you're gonna run into that where, you know, you wanna make it affordable, but you need to have a nice-looking community to attract people. And so it's not cut and dried. It's always trying to weigh it in all the projects that you see. Uh, the, there is a phasing plan for this, the three phases. Um, Newcombe Ranch, phase one, uh, Kells East Ranch, phase two, and then the remainder of the properties, phase three. And, you know, lots of different individual property owners and they'll come in as they choose, uh, to develop their properties. Some may never come in, just to expand on.
This is Lori, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I cannot hear.
I'm sorry, I'll see if I can speak up or speak closer into the microphone here.
Okay, thank you.
Phase one is Newcombe Ranch. Oops, wrong one. Uh, this is Newcombe Ranch. You can see the subdivision, mostly single-family residential, there's space for multifamily and then the, the park and the drainage ponds, uh, the commercial up in here, the office space. This is all commercial. Um, you can see this blue, that will be the hundred-year floodplain after the project is built. It'll all be outside of the residential and all the development areas. Oh, the neighborhood park. Let's see, um, this, let's see, the neighborhood park. The neighborhood park, I've been, I don't remember. Is it down here? Oh, over here?
I just don't remember seeing the Newcombe Ranch.
So A? So Mark, I just wanted to highlight that the neighborhood park here, to help facilitate that the parks come in early, that, uh, basically we split that with the first phase of the development, so half the park would be built.
Ben, could you speak into the mic, please?
I wanted to make sure I highlighted that for the group is that in order to help facilitate some of the parks being constructed up front, um, instead of waiting to the end, i- is that with that phase one up here with, so the fir-, so the first phase of, of Newcombe Ranch i- is gonna be this northeast area here. And then what we have here in A is basically a neighborhood park. And so the proposal is to build, that's, it's pretty much enough homes and, and impact fees collected, neighborhood park fees, that would facilitate, um, enough funds to build, to dedicate that land, build the roads and then build half the park. And then when phase two comes in, they would finish the other half. As we continue to collect fees and dig out the, the big pond for, um, future improvements.
And then Kells East Ranch, um, there's a space for one-hundred-and-forty-seven, single-family residences, one-hundred-and-twenty-three multifamily residences, one-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand square feet of commercial property, uh, thirty-three point seven acres of open space detention pond. A lot of that's along the Gilcizer Slough and a three-point-one acre park detention pond. And the total project is ninety-three acres in size. And you can see how it's proposed. Again, it's probably all, at this time in the floodplain, they will elevate all of the developed properties, uh, the residential as well as the commercial properties, uh, to be a foot above the hundred-year floodplain.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Um, the floodplain should be updated next year for twenty-twenty. It's supposed to, should be updated, so we may have good news next year on that for the developers. Just wanna let you know.
Okay. Uh, the approval process, uh, at the beginning, we gave you the history and where we're at right now. The draft master plan, environmental impact report has been prepared, public comments. Um, and then ESA will be preparing the final document. Uh, concurrently with that, uh, staff will be preparing a general plan amendment, pre-annexation zoning for the area. State law requires you have all of that stuff that'll run with it. And then also development agreements for the two subdivisions, uh, are, the drafts have been prepared. I believe it's in city attorney's office right now, so that is moving forward. And then the Newcombe Ranch and Kells East Ranch subdivisions, they're also being proposed to run concurrently with all of this. And all of those must be approved by the city council following a planning commission's review and recommendation. So that's what's upcoming in the next, I think it's supposed to start around September when we start the public hearing process. Um, also, what needs to be done, the tax exchange agreement between the city and the county. It's my understanding that there is a city-county, a board supervisor, city council subcommittee working on that. But the, this project cannot go any farther with these subdivisions until that is agreed upon. LAFCO cannot hear the projects until there's that agreement. And then LAFCO, the local agency formation commission, will consider the sphere of influence amendment, the city sphere, uh, to incorporate it within. And then concurrently or shortly right thereafter, they'll be entertaining the annexation for the two subdivisions, as well as detachment from the Center County Fire Department. And hopefully that can all occur by, in September and October this year. And I'll turn it over to Elizabeth Boyd with ESA to talk about the environmental process.
Through the mayor, I do have a question. As you're phasing in these new, these two new developments, um, and I was looking at, at what point does the aspect of a school being built? Because hopefully, I mean, it looks like there would be a lot of families hopefully purchasing, um.
It, you know, that, that's a decision made by the school district. All's that the city can do is, through this process, they work with the school district to find out the site they like. And the, but the school district will have to buy the site from a developer. If they choose not to, it'll go to, there's an alternative in the plan for, um, I forget, residential or something if the school district doesn't buy it. Um, you know, and they would not, if they do build a school, it wouldn't be till later, till they have the student.
Mm-hmm.
They need to fill it. Right now, there's probably capacity at Riverbend and other schools. So it'd be built later in the process, probably.
There isn't compa, there isn't capacity in the schools, I know that. But in looking at the plan, you know, there's a location proposed for the, the site, so it's, it could be a growth of about thirteen-hundred kids. Um, so I'm just interested in knowing how that relationship will work. And it sounds like it's, the district has to work with the developer and then work with the state to get the purchasing and all those things going, right?
It's just like us trying to build infrastructure. It's very difficult.
Okay, thank you.
When property taxes are collected or is a part of the property tax collection process, we, we pay for schools. So that money goes to the school district directly? Or do we keep that in trust for the schoo, how does that work?
Property tax goes to the county. You pay it to the, to the county and then they send it to the state. The city disaggregates that to the school districts.
Okay, thank you.
The part of it that goes to the school district. Some of it goes to the city, some to the county, some to special districts and the schools get the majority of it, though.
Thanks.
Well, as Dennis said earlier, I'm Elizabeth Boyd and I'm a project manager with Environmental Science Associates. We were the, uh, consultants on both the master plan and the environmental review process, um, which ended up being an environmental impact report. Um, those are commonly prepared when, um, there are some sort of significant, um, impacts related to what happens with a project. Part of what we look at is what is the project? It's, um, sometimes can be different than, you know, what he, uh, Dennis was just talking about with the master plan. It incorporates all the different actions that come before you, but it also incorporates some actions that would come before other agencies, um, like the county or, uh, LAFCO, um, some of the special districts, um, that might be serving in some way. So just to go over what the environmental review process included. It included the master plan, the sphere of influence amendment, the annexation requests for phase one and phase two, detachments, um, what LAFCO likes to call reorganization, so attachments, detachments from different districts, uh, the general planned map amendments, pre- pre-annexation zoning and the tentative subdivision maps for those two first phases. Yuba City, um, the city council would be the decision-makers on the master plan adoption, the general plan amendment and the pre-annexation zoning. Of course, you can say to LAFCO, hey, we would like to increase our sphere of influence and we would like to increase our city boundary limits, but you are not the lead agency for that. You can tell LAFCO that that's what you desire, but ultimately, LAFCO is the responsible agency for making those decisions. The environmental review process started a couple of years ago with what is called environmental scoping, where there was a public hearing held. I believe there was about twenty or thirty folks that showed up, had some comments about what they wanted to see covered in the environmental document. And that process, um, was about thirty days. It went to, um, then, you know, there was a lot of work in the last, um, couple of years leading to the draft environmental impact report being released in early May and that ended last Ma- Monday. And that ended last Monday to hear back from folks. And I think we got about five different letters, including from the county, LAFCO, a couple individuals. And we will be responding to those in the final environmental impact report. And some of those might lead to changes in the project description or some responses to comments or things that they expressed some concern about that they needed some clarification on. Part of the environmental review process is to go through, what is the, what are the objectives for the project? So that the city can really evaluate, well, are there other alternatives to this project that will also meet these project objectives? And they're, they're much longer. I tried to shorten them, and I won't read them all out. But they're, they're fairly standard, high-quality neighborhoods, landscaping, just desirability. And also supporting the approval for LAFCO. Building a project that would be something that LAFCO would be okay with, providing for open space and parks. And the requirement that Dennis had talked about, which is providing development above the floodplain. So this, these objectives were used to come up with different alternatives. The first alternative is just do nothing. Just like leave it the way it is, in perpetuity, forever, just do nothing. And that was considered that, what is called environmentally superior alternative, because it really has no new impacts. I mean, if you do nothing, you really don't do much. Alternative two is going with the existing Sutter County zoning. And what is in the general plan, building out to that extent. There are, I think, about 600 units under this proposal. You know, lower, more ranchettes, more estate residential. And then the third one was looking at what is in the plan, but just 25% less development in all realms. And ultimately, it's up to US decision makers, the planning commission, to look at it, make a recommendation on whether you want to move forward with one of the alternatives or, and then make that to a city council. And then you can decide to adopt any of these alternatives. They're all valid, you know, or the project itself. In the environmental review process, we look at a whole range of things. And I'm sure you're very familiar with this from other projects, but aesthetics, agriculture, biological resources, just any host of things. And what are the potential environmental impacts that this project could have so that you can make an informed decision? There are certain impacts that cannot be mitigated to less than significant. So there's things like aesthetics. You're going to change a scenic character. You might have a view right now of the Sutter Buttes. Once something is built there, you will not have a view from all the locations that you currently have a view. It's, that's just, it's not something that you can mitigate for. It just will change it. And so that is a significant and unavoidable impact. Agriculture, you're going to be taking land that is currently in agriculture and converting it to an urban use. And that, there's just no way to, you cannot, you know, make new agricultural land. And so that is a significant and unavoidable impact. And so there are different impacts in these. And I do have more details, if you want to go through any of these, of, you know, what were the cases? Some of these had some mitigation associated with them, some of them did not. Like aesthetics, there was no mitigation to reduce the impact for building, you know, urban character in an area that's currently rural. But for transportation, there are some mitigations that can help to mitigate it, but just won't take it to a less insignificant level. There's some other...
Ma'am, would you mind going through those, some of those related to transportation, please?
Sure. And, okay, so you can find these in, wait, let me see. Transportation. Okay, so in section 3.14 in the environmental impact report, there are two different impacts related to 99, Highway 99, where there's a level of service. So level of service means that amount of flow of cars, and if you have slower flow, you get a worse level of service. So finding that there, you know, it would impact the level of service such that there would be a negative impact. And while there would be improvements to intersections, it would not be enough to reduce that to a less insignificant level. And I can get to even more detail, if you like, in looking at the actual section and numbers and where those intersections are.
Interested in knowing the, is there another page to that before?
For transportation, no.
Okay.
I don't believe so. Yeah, it's just...
It's to make, I'm just having an interest in making sure we address mass transit. I know we have a chart here with a few bus stops. Have we had any conversations with Uba Sutter Transit on anything involving with that? Particularly when we're going to add, hopefully, some lower-income housing? I think transportation is important for mobility purposes.
So I know staff circulated to the Transit. And Keith Martin and his group had a chance to respond. And basically those, those responses were incorporated into the proposal.
All right, so they're aware of this?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, so then, some of the impacts that were able to be mitigated to less than significant include air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, hazardous and hazardous materials, noise and vibration, and some of the transportation and traffic impacts were able to be mitigated. And then water supply issues. And with that, you know, if you have any questions on the environmental impact report or if you would like to ask about the plan, we'd be happy to answer.
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I do have one question about applying this in future, in future situations, assuming that this is adopted. And we have this EIR that is also adopted as part of this. In five years, if someone comes with a questionable use, and I've seen this happen, where they refer back to this EIR which doesn't address that, is there some method by which they are then required to get their own specific EIR?
So there are several different mechanisms in state law. In looking at the SEQA guidelines, you actually have the potential of looking at, do you cause a new or substantially more significant impact with the new proposal?
Beyond this report?
Beyond this report. So under state law, whatever that project is, say, one of the sites that's meant for low-density housing now wants to build a 10-story tower. And so they have to look at the EIR, and they'll have to do a new evaluation to determine if they need, what kind of document they need to do. It could be something as small as an addendum checklist, which is just saying, yes, we're proposing, you know, 500 units here instead of, you know, 499. The one extra unit doesn't really cause an extra issue. Or we're proposing 500 units where there used to be only 10. And in which case, they do have new or substantially more significant transportation impacts. Or, and so they have to do additional review. And so that could be a subsequent EIR, some other mechanism. It wouldn't necessarily have to start from scratch, but they do have to look at what's already been analyzed and see if they're within the envelope.
Thank you.
If I could expand on, for a minute, on what Elizabeth said. If, say it calls for apartments and they want to build a commercial or something like that, it takes an amendment to the specific plan, the master plan, general plan, rezoning. And that triggers California Environmental Quality Act for, in its own environmental document. Typically, those are called negative declarations, the simpler form. But if it's significant, then they have to update the EIR. And that could be a whole new EIR, it can be a supplement to the existing EIR. But yeah, all of those changes go through environmental review.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, I know Vice Mayor Cordoza mentioned about the flood. But in reviewing, it's, you know, the flood areas 100 to 200 years. And I had an interesting conversation with another council member from another city and made the comment to me of the, that they had a development in an area where there was 100 to 200-year flood. And just behold, it got developed and it flooded terribly. I'm not trying to jinx it, so knock on wood here. If, if this would be, so what does the insurance look like for a potential resident in there? I was looking on the EIR on page 396, but do you know what those particular rates, if the, if it doesn't change?
They wouldn't be able to build in the floodplain. But if they do get insurance, flood insurance, I'm not sure what the rates are now per house. I should know, I pay it.
I would just add on to Dennis's statement there that in order to build, we, they would have to build above the floodplain. And so any new development, the condition would be, it has to be a foot above the 100-year floodplain and then also meet the state 200-year floodplain requirements. And so with that, this is showing the 100-year flood. There's also a 200-year flood map out there that's real similar to the 100-year. And, and as some of you know, Subufa is working through updating that with, with reestablishing the levies and getting them certified, that we expect to see the 100-year reduce slightly. But right now, we're using, what's shown is what's current.
So that whole blue, shaded blue area needs to be brought up? Is that, just to be clear on that?
It needs to be built up for areas where the houses are. And so, but the area for the parks, for the open space and the soccer fields, they would technically be underwater in that 100-year flood event and then be pumped out to Gilcizer as they come out.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
I'd like to invite any comment from our folks joining us on the telephone, if any?
Do you have any comments?
Nope, we're good.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, I'm Sean Menard with MHM Engineering, represents the subdividers of the property, would like to...
Happy to hear from you, Sean.
I'm Sean Menard with MHM Engineering, and we represent two of the developers, Kells East and Newcombe Ranch. And just wanted to point out, I heard a lot of questions that raised tonight, and a couple of them I wanted to address, maybe add some insight about the detention pond. Mr. Boomgarden's questions about, hey, about, I know which pond he's talking about in North Uba City. It was all at one level. So you got a small storm event, you got the bottom of the pond flooded. One of the things that wasn't mentioned, if you look real close, you can see, not so much this one, but the other tentative map. Oh, I'm not going to point, I want to go back to the other tentative. If you look real close, the pond is stair-stepped. So a portion of the pond is above the 100-year or above the 10-years. It's not going to be flooded. Then it stair-steps down to this first elevation where there's the first playfield. And we, that's between the 50 and 100-year storm. And then you got one more stair-step, which is between, above a 10-year storm, but, you know, be, below 50-year. And then the lowest portion, which is more equivalent to what up by in North Uba City, which should get flooded on a, you know, the smaller storms. So that is one thing that's unique about this detention pond site. And same with the Kells East, that you're not going to see, that, something Uba City hasn't done in the past. You go to Sacramento, my daughter plays soccer. I bet you 80% of the soccer fields we play in now are detention ponds. You could barely tell they're detention ponds because they landscape and they have gradual slopes. But that's just the way, that's what it is now. And to get dual use of a site, you'll see more and more of it. But I think that's one thing you'll see different than what happened in North Uba City. That wasn't designed as a multi-use facility, at least when we were, it was designed as a detention pond. So hopefully that answers that question or gives you more insight into the situation.
Very much appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Okay. The flood zone, again, these flood zones that are shown here are mostly because of a levy failure. There's also 100-year flood from normal rainfall without a levy failure. They look much different. This here takes a levy failure to look, have this much water. So it, just so people aren't afraid, and Subufa's done a great job of fixing close to 44 miles of levy. And we, I'm fully aware of all the floodplain issues. And basically, why those detention ponds are so big is we're digging out those pole, holes, taking the dirt and putting on the rest of the site to make them all above the 100-year floodplain. So, and then, as Mr. Cordoza mentioned, this project, you know, they're going to be looking at the floodplain, and it appears it's going to be a little bit lower the way the new modeling works out. So we'll actually have either more flexibility in how high our lot pads are or we have more ability to make more of the pond more usable for playfields. Some of the other questions I heard, oh, on the financing plan, those numbers look big, 90,000, 91,000, develop a single-family lot. Ironically, this is not much different than anywhere else in Uba City. Actually, we had a project in North Uba City, they're building houses now. It came out $127,000 a lot. And so this, this is actually one of the more economical sites because what you don't see in Uba City are big lot, 160-acre parcel or contingent, one owner. You don't see that anywhere in Uba City. Mostly it's 5, 10. And you get adjacent to one of the major roads, those fees just go up through the roof. So from the perspective of, yeah, we have to do a lot of infrastructure, but it's not much worse than a lot of the other projects in Uba City. And actually, this could be a catalyst to help the rest of the Lincoln East project many of you have heard. This brings some, the backbone sewer infrastructure that much closer to that site. So you have to, looking at the big picture, this may help some other areas develop later on. So those are some of the quick ones I saw that wanted to make sure everybody realizes that, yeah, we're, they're big numbers, but all the projects in Uba City and in the surrounding area have big numbers, too. So if you have any other questions, I'll try to answer them. But we've been working on this for nine years, and we're looking forward and working with staff for all that time. Spent a lot of time on the parks. It was almost like eight months dealing with the parks and when the timing, and when we build that neighborhood park. And making sure you don't build the park too soon and not have enough houses to pay for the operation and maintenance of it. So it, there's a, you have to factor everything in. And that, we spent a lot of time on all that through this process. So hopefully, and thanks a lot for your time tonight, and look forward to the planning commission and the city council later.
Any questions? Nope. All right, thank you very much, Sean. Appreciate it. Not hearing anything immediately from the DIAS. I am, I know public comment period has passed, but I am going to honor a request from Patty Leland to speak. How you doing? Routine is you just come up and please state your name again and, right up there. Yep.
Good evening, Patty Leland. I'm a resident in the proposed area. And I was here approximately almost two and a half years ago in January or so, in a terrible storm where we were wondering if the doors were going to blow out of this building when this first plan was revealed. So, and public comment was received at that time. The few residents that did respond to the very vague announcement about the meeting, about there being an environmental review planned in our area, come find out about it, this was revealed during the meeting. So the residents, the 71 residents mentioned in the report, I don't know that they've ever received more information other than they voted this down. And so at that meeting, two years ago, I raised my hand. I said, okay, this may be the elephant in the room, but as I understood it, we were, we voted on this and we voted it down. Why are we here? And, but the political powers that be have pushed, continued to push this track against the residents' desires. So of course, this is a new process. This doesn't happen. It's very exciting to have the discussion about adding homes to our area, to have a well-developed planned, a plan for our community. However, I think some of the cornerstone... However, I think some of the cornerstones of the process have been left out. So I realize that I'm now talking to a completely different council than, than uh, just about the, what was here um, a couple of years ago. And how this came about, I can't say. I have been a resident in this area for um, over 20 years. And um, a little disappointed to see even this particular meeting, I learned about it from the Appeal Democrat. Although I have provided my email address, my, my home address. Obviously, I'm in this area, and yet I do not recall receiving any uh, notice related to the further discussions of this meeting, and did provide uh, input uh, back in February of 17 related to concerns on environmental impacts, um, as was requested and required at that time. So just the overall concerns, that was probably the biggest, is the lack of involvement of the actual residents that are going to be impacted. The um, certainly the, the buzz about having a Costco, obviously no commitments are ever discussed, but certainly that, the perfect-sized parcel there on the corner in Phase 1, uh, there at Bog in 99. It's been a buzz for at least a decade that Costco might want to come to our area. However, I don't think we're weighing the difference if people are go, I love Costco, by the way. Uh, and not that they're coming, but then the impact on, um, probably put the nail in the coffin for Sam's Club. So if we're looking at um, as far as uh, sales, tax, and things that people aren't going to necessarily spend more, certainly not in the short term with our existing population. So just some of those things, uh, and then probably my final comment, because I wasn't prepared, because I just saw this in the paper yesterday, actually last night, and printed um, the um, 150-page um, document. I didn't have enough paper at home to print the 700 and some odd page.
Yeah, so you have a final comment?
And uh, the final comment would be, if we did have a major development, as he described, as um, like a Walmart-sized commercial activity in that area or along Bog, it is currently challenging or a traffic hazard to have a quick-stop gas station there because of the traffic that comes off the highway to turn in there, even if you're turning to the right. I go to Costcos all over, they need a lot more space than anything that's being considered here. And same thing with all of the two-lane roads around the area that cannot handle that traffic, or a similar commercial project. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, ma'am. Mark, did you have some?
Only when you go around for comments.
No word. I think we're at that point.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
First and foremost, appreciate Dennis, your presentation, Elizabeth, Ben, Sean, thank you for clarifying a few questions. Uh, I'm still going to, I got a few things I just want to rattle off. First and foremost is, I'm encouraged by the fact that the detention pond plan, uh, seems like it has a lot of thought, but I'm still concerned about access. It just seems like we have these, during planning, we plan for open areas, but then when it comes to actuality, we can't access them as the public. So I'm not sure exactly what the answer is, but with uh, with time, I hope I do find out that answer because it is important to have some open areas um, to recreate in. I am going to try to encourage that when it comes to the design guidelines and the streetscapes, that it's an inclusive process uh, in regards to our builders and developers. And Dennis, I definitely appreciate, I've been there on, on both sides now of, of, uh, both on staff, on development, but also as a private property owner who's uh, developing a piece of property. So uh, it is important to have quality, good-looking stuff, but at the same time, uh, when times are, are challenging economically, we need to make sure that it makes sense to what we're asking the builders and developers to do. Development fees are going to be a big deal. This council is, is going to have to tackle that. Uh, and I know we're well underway with some of the studies that are undergoing, um, just simply to make things affordable to build in our town. Looking forward to serving uh, through the uh, through the appointment of our mayor and backing of the city council. Councilman Shaw and myself are the two folks that'll be meeting with the county on the master tax exchange agreement. And uh, looking forward to getting that going here in the next few weeks to hopefully get to a, a reasonable and fair master tax exchange agreement for both sides. Uh, I like the Bog Stewart Master Plan, I know it's been a long time coming, I'm excited to keep it moving forward. Uh, I do, I'm concerned, obviously, about the impact to the public, but at the same time, uh, I do think that this is something that is, is uh, is good for the city of Yuba City. And with that, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question, and sir, you might be able to answer this better than uh, than Dennis. Can you tell me what the target audience is for your development? What's the target buyer, median income, household size? I'm sure you factored that in with all the 6,000-plus homes.
Sean, I'm going to have to ask you to hit the mic, please.
Our project is the Calz East and the Newcombe Ranch, and there's not that many lots in the whole, in the whole pro, project it is, but ours is a lot less. But um, what we did is we tried to have a different house, lot sizes to accommodate all the different plan size. So a typical, we have lots of 55, 65, and 75, which has a, you know, the spectrum. But we see most in Yuba City are like 65 currently. We're going to probably see a shift towards the smaller, a little bit smaller lots, just as you see the construction costs and impact fees, you take all that into factor. We're probably going to see closer to 55 to 60-foot lots. So that, you know, that's a 500 or $450,000 home, and um, what income takes, that takes, uh, not, I'm the engineer, I'm not the, the financing guy. But um, but that's what we try to do, we try to make a, a mix of all the different housing styles. And we have multifamily, the apartments, so we have all, the whole, full spectrum in both Newcombe and Calz. The fine tuning of what, how much, what income level those people have, that's not my expertise.
If you could go back to the slide, either one of the ranches, and you'll see the um-
Am I going the right way, Ben?
Yep, going the right way. That's perfect. All of that is single-family residents in all those lots, correct?
That's cr, it's, well, the multifamily is this lot, or this parcel 10. All the other ones that are lauded-
Right.
Are sing, single-family detached. These up here are a little bit smaller, these are probably, these are the 50, 55-foot lots, 50 to 55. Then we transition, a lot of these are the 65, we have some bigger lots down here, you know, transitioning to some of the ranch, those bigger hou, homes that are existing. And so those are a bigger lot neighborhood, so we have a little bit of everything on this. And of course, we have the apartments here.
I'm just trying to get a feel for the development itself, so go back up to the smallest in at the top. If that's a 55K lot, and then you have all the impact fees and stuff, that's where you're talking to get to probably the 400, 350, 400,000 price range up there.
65, this area here probably be the 450.
Okay.
You know, if construction costs keep going up, it may take a $500,000 house, I don't know. But uh, right now, you know, the ideal target would be about a 430, $450,000 home.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Quick, basic clarification, you talking width when you say 55, 65, 75?
Sorry about that, yeah, 55-foot wide lot, they're all about 100, 110 feet deep.
All right, thank you. The others continue coming, otherwise we're at the end. All right.
One last quick question for anybody that's willing to answer. If I have any comments or questions after the fact, because that usually happens, who can I email? Don't everybody answer at once.
You can email me, you can email Vikram Shima, the planning manager. You can directly email, or you can write, written correspondence can be submitted at the counter, either way.
Okay, thanks, Vikram.
I wanted to get back to the end, but I seem to- How do we get back to the end? Did I hold it upside down? It looks right to me.
That's happened before, don't feel bad.
Put my glasses when I need them. It, it had to conclusion, um, one thing I wanted to point out in regards to the, the lady that spoke about public hearings. Public hearing process really hasn't started yet. The planning commission will be conducting public hearings probably in September. Following that, it'll be the city council, and if all goes well there, and it gets, something gets approved, then Lafco will also be having public hearings on all of this. And there will be notices sent out to individual property owners on all of that.
All right, very good. That being said, thank you all very much, obviously you put a lot of work, years and years of work into this, and it's a, looks very comprehensive document, so thank you very much. That being said, we'll consider ourselves adjourned.